All right. Good evening, I'd like to call the order, the committee of the whole committee development meeting, July fourth, twenty three at six thirty K. First and foremost, I need an approval of the agenda as amended, please note that I have six point two been removed from the agenda. Due to comments from the fleet this morning, staff have asked for time to to do evaluation and get some advice. All right, let's write it on, write it on, write it on. So if I can have a move for that. By customer's mail, they have a second one. Like I said, like I said, Joe, we're all, that's great, all in favor? Or instead, disclosure of key area interests or conflict of interest in the general nature there. Moving on to number four, business arriving from the previous committee meeting minutes, anybody have any? You're in the, all right, moving on to number five, delegations and presentations. Today, we have the Holy Rich, who's the owner, and doing a business introduction and development, CB one. Mister Grant.
A. Thanks, sir. Well, Johnstone, yeah, I got introduced to Johnstone, you know, the customer in Johnstone. And then I came here, I liked it, and now I want to relocate part of my business in Johnstone. Simple for the fact that Miss Sagra, Brownton, Toronto, real estate is true. So that's basically one of them, that's one reason. The other reason is that all products from Johnstone has to go back to Mr. Saga. There's a go back to Mr. Saga, and some of my customers are actually in Kuwait. So the product can go to Saga, it's gets sorted out, and then goes to Kuwait. So Johnstone would give me an advantage for that risk. And so that's one of the main reasons that I'm interested in Johnstone. I'm sorry, that's it.
You had ten minutes.
The two of you.
Oh, yeah, fair enough, and you know, I mean, you did have a lot of information in your, in the agenda, besides what else people are, you know. So the council committee is, has a view of it already, so that's great, and we'll see if we have any questions for you there.
Yes, questions?
Mister, don't be, you might have something?
Yeah, of course. It's, if you could just give me an envision of what it's going to look like when you get these buildings built, and how many people you're hiring? And what in fact really do there?
Okay, basically, what it is, is Alex and Carter, that's it, Woods, Valens, and Carter.
So it's just a distributing set, that was it?
That's what more it is. It's not really, or anything like that, it's just that it would come in, truck loads, it's sorted out, and it goes back. While it's stored, and it goes back out at opportunity times, it gets, so that's basically what it says, wooden pile. So. And it wouldn't need some outside storage, some indoor storage, right, especially with the cartwood product. None of it is cartwood, so it's not really cartwood, supposedly. It's recycling, but it's more reused than recycled. Right? The recycle is a little bit wider, also woodchips and all the nervous about that. So basically, almost ninety-five percent of the product is reused. Right, the recycling factor would be cardboard that is damaged, young or used, then we would truck back to cardboard recycling. Right, and for wooden pile, it would be recycling, breaks it down in another way, it's five percent or ten percent that cannot be reused like it is. Recycling involves stripping it down for stuff that can be reused. Right, and then beyond that, the rest of it is basically garbage.
So how many is that involved?
Stock wise, at this point, we're looking at three or four people maximum. Yes. Well, we've got outside, the truck is that does the trucking, the only way to increase the higher driver, higher, uh, that.
So it's more like a drop off and pick up people?
More, yeah, drop off.
Is it more or is it less?
It's more. Yes, it's, we have to go, that's going, has to go. But it's basically, there's more collection, like you see a drop off, right? And the goal fact is that case, it will come in and won't be bonded properly, so what we'll do, brief on it, right? And basically make it more presentable to future use.
When you're looking at two parcels, two parcels of land, one smaller and a little bit larger, so if you're just a drop off depot, why would you need both parcels?
Unprecedented parts, whatever, we happen to have just one layer. It are an acre and is it an acre, an acre and a half, that would basically what I do not. They, they, if I have the yard or parcel, then I could do stuff like spoons or wooden reels and huge bricks and stuff like that. But that's not what we do, right? So it's not really needed. But that acre and a half would be perfect, would just do. It wouldn't give me a foothold here, right? So in the future, if I lose the new spoons and stuff like that, I'm gonna always be looking, right, so I don't need that none. But if it's on sale, nineteen five, I would, I and all right, you've got a specific, a more strategic, what do you say, you need a, then you know, not right? Or you have, basically, the warehouse, basically. Right?
Okay, thanks.
Not this time, I make a fact.
Thank you, really, Chair. With the pallets, are they all intact and you send them to different companies to get reused, to put stuff on them? Like Giant Tiger has all kinds of pallets, or?
Yeah, what I got would be like, um, okay, what happens is one particular customer who would get here, but fewer than the pallets, right? Coming, they transform it into something, yes, they don't need the pallets, the sort of color. So I buy the pallets, and then I find another customer that has the need for the pallets, not selling the pallets, and then it continues.
Okay, and it's, you said that you're in business for twenty years or something, you're set in Quebec now, or do you have a?
No, no.
Oh, so do you have a warehouse now?
Miss.
You have a warehouse in Mississauga?
Yes.
And how big is that?
Pretty, uh, I've reduced it to five hundred square feet, and I've got maybe about two thousand square feet outside. And that's small, so you need about ten thousand square feet, to be honest, to the comfort of. So that's one of the reasons I might move.
So would you move from Mississauga to here, or would you keep that as just as a satellite?
I reduce Mississauga, right, brought it all to maybe fifteen hundred square feet would be enough. And then I increase my storage unit.
That's all, I'm hearing, now, thanks.
There, anybody?
So just to clarify, you're not, you can't let you defer, you know, there's no killing or anything like?
No, no, no killing, uh, in, of, over twenty years, I've never had a dose. That's from both side of the garden chat generally. Because I try to source it, because most, there's two ways to do it, there's a way where you get a pallet scene. If you're not going on right away, you strip them down, or sometimes you, you collect stuff like garbage just to get you would get the garbage with the good, right, and then you don't, all the garbage thing, they think it's a, I don't put that.
Right, so if you were splitting your business by percentage, how much of your pallets, and how much of the cardboard drops? Qualify.
Uh, in various, you're the, right, sometimes the pallet business is, it's supposed to be fifty fifty. Because most of my pallet suppliers are also in cart, the hardware supply, right, so it used to be fifty fifty. It's basically fifty fifty. However, based on what the market it is, and maybe selling more cardboard than pallets, and then you start having to build up the pallets. And the other way around, maybe selling a lot of pallets and having to build a department, because they, and you already left. User is not necessarily the same as the previous, so you know, you have to go whatever you want.
Cool, thanks. Yeah, I, I will, so, how I said, um, so currently in Mississauga, right? Yes, yeah. And mostly indoor facility?
It's, it's mostly indoor, yes.
Right, and one building or more than one?
One building, present.
And so like loading bays, how many transports, how many loading bays?
Uh, usually two.
Two, so a lot of outdoor storage then around the building and?
There's outdoor storage behind.
Right, and so like from an aesthetics standpoint, what's it gonna look like from the outside of, in our industrial park on the highway to when you're driving by? It's a nice clean facility that we have there right now, what's it gonna look like when people are driving by there?
Why, if you're doing outside storage, well, you could have, maybe you burn retrieves or something near it, a production block, it'd be, but you will some box. It's, it's, for outside storage, you're going to spot. If you don't want to see pallets, then everything has to be indoor. And to store all the pallets indoor, it's a little, yeah, a little more expensive to store. After all, it's just waiting, just getting it.
But thirty percent of it's cardboard.
The cardboard has mostly happened to be stored inside. In the cardboard, it's not anything that is, uh, it's not anything that is, especially that, what is not loose cardboard going around, it's not a cardboard circular. Right, everything is modeled neatly, right? So while I can show you some pictures of basically what I do, right?
I think it might be.
Okay, okay.
Uh, so you're, you're looking at one point five acres, you, you know, indicated the, you know, the six point five interest in the future, but the one point five acres, so.
Is of interest.
How, how, from, are you, how much of that one point five acres are you wanting to build on and actually even your storage? What, what size of the building are you looking, putting on?
For me, the ten thousand square feet is enough.
So you're looking at building a ten thousand?
Yes, I, I don't need more than that, not right now. In the future, I don't need more, but that's all we need, but.
And so you're prepared to build warehouses that'll do what you need?
Yeah, ten thousand square feet and with at least two docks.
Two docks?
Yes.
And, and it's not garbage?
It's not garbage. Not, it's not like garbage. I don't get into the garbage, it doesn't, it's, it makes sense for some guys, it just doesn't make any sense for me.
So, okay, so I know you're gonna show me some, it's not great, what, what brings you, why ever to Mississauga again?
Because I've got a customer just around the corner from the property. And I've been serviced them for the last four years. And the fact of the location, you're like six and a half hours from New York. We're nine and a half hours from New York inside, right?
Maybe, right, so.
I don't have a customer to do it.
Right, but you're more, the, the idea of coming here is so you can support one of our local industries.
I am already supporting one in your local area.
But the reason you want to relocate?
Is basically, yeah, be of better support to them, better service, and it also allows me to be of better service to the customer than I have there in Quebec, because we're adding four more hours. So it'll cost them less to ship for me. And the product costs less at the end of the day, because I'm going to ship product from here, it must start, I have products, so. The idea's mission would be for the product that's in the G T A stays in the G T A. Right, and not have to ship here, because that's gonna cost me. So now I'm going to go from Spain to bring there, spring to bring here, right, because I'm going to reduce how much square feet I have there because of one, the cost, and cost is the number one, yes, so it's not even if you consider that on the square feet, and I'll buy a thousand, it's cheap now, right, it's not a problem. So cost is one, and the saving from there will help me to finance the operation here, I'll save money. And I'll be more attractive to my Quebec customers, I can start looking for customers in New York, because I'm closer, right, and stuff like that.
And so one of your, so you already do business with that?
Yes.
With someone, and I'm assuming that somebody is in our industrial park?
Yes.
Okay. Uh.
Price me, price me. Price me, you're beside the, it's like on Commerce Drive.
This one?
Price me, yeah, let's just, yeah, yeah. You're my main boss again, now, that's what I know, now, this. Yeah. And I, I do all of their, their hardware and their skids, not courage.
Well, I'll, I think I read all of this, but I just want to ask it for the record, so from a timeframe standpoint, if we were close a business deal next week with, with Edwardsburg Cardinal, what would the next two years or next year and a half look like on that site?
Next, we have to find site as soon as possible, so it wouldn't sit in there. So I'd basically be applying for building permits, and we could start. So that's basically, I'd apply very much.
You're ready to?
I'm ready to move to Johnstone.
Right, I, I get that you're ready to do businesses on this town, are you ready to build?
Yes, yes. Well, obviously, based on the permit, right, and stuff like that.
Just, if I can ask a question to staff. Yeah, so to a C A O, I think to C A O or the A B C B C, I'm not sure which one, but for what is being proposed, as a proposed usage, it's light industrial, is that fair, does it, it's recycling, what, what exactly does it fit into? From a zoning standpoint, and does, does zoning fit, does, I mean, my fear is garbage. Um, what, what is the?
Through the chair, Mister Grant, a lot of the, the use, um, was, I have, I, I'd say always, so, so, he is, this, 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 on, the warehouse, of, the, the, this.
Tell me, that wraps up in, I, I'm, yeah. Maybe you have something you want to say?
Oh, yes, I just have one question, do you have compacters in there for the cartboards, two or three compacters?
No.
How do you compact?
I, I don't do recycle cartwood. So I, I do recycle tote, it looks something like this. Like that? Well, that's what they wanted by, or, okay, yes, so they, they're coming, and they won't be bonded as nice to this, they'd be bonded like their pack to work. Right, I would take the product, and I would bundle it like this, they bundle it, and they'd be tipping over at six feet. I bundle it, and it's tipping, it'll go into not at all, it's not to get, and you don't really need to.
So there's, so there's no compacters?
No, no, okay. You don't even need the dumpster.
No, I'm not saying the dumpster, I'm just saying is it compacted, they have compact needs, and it straps it, and you put them on a skid, and then you're ready to go. So you're not compact.
You're basically putting a machine that comes with it.
Just like that?
Yes.
So that's all by hand, by hand?
By, it's all, I think, right, it's, uh.
Yeah, there's no machinery in that.
You want to show?
Well, that, that's what, that's what I think. Okay, I'll, I'll try and find the picture of what it's like when it comes in.
He's still using, this is your, are you finished now?
Yeah, I'm finished, yeah, thank you.
So I just had a question, that you, you don't know, but what do you do with the scrap wood and those extra triggers, replacing boards?
That's what I'm saying, that I have so very little, I could basically, what I normally do, I would store in an empty tote. And maybe once or twice a year, I would go to a, a dump location, and basically dump it, so maybe there's king recycling, those to me, right, and they handle all that garbage. So once a year, I'd out pour two tongs that I bring to them, that would be it. I don't strip those, and I don't collect garbage, it's, all of my clients are very nice pallets, and they come in like that, and those are, that's the clients in the other. Well.
Through the chair, how many points did they deliver, forty?
How many, four is maximum, I don't need more than four people to do all that work, all that work. Works well.
Okay.
Mister, do you, you have any square footage, you have an acre and a half?
An acre and a half, we probably have sixty thousand square feet in by, and how much is usable, right, then you'll have to have uh, space around the lot, that's gonna be less, I don't know how much is usable, that I have to ask.
You're pretty close, it's sixty, six thousand.
Okay. Yes.
If I want, so whether you can fit in a smaller one, or you want to make an offer on a larger.
Small one?
Well, I don't, what do you say, ten, ten thousand square?
Okay, so is there a, a, a square footage that is necessary?
Deliver a lot of the area over there. That's a long, you can sort that out after, we just.
Yeah, that means, if there is something that you're looking for, there's a square footage for a lot, it's different. The thing is, you have to realize, I'm functioning in all the ten thousand square feet, that doesn't make it comfortable. Right, so ten thousand square feet would be perfect for the cardboard right now, right? And I don't really need this, it'll shut up for us, right? So I'm personally seeing those square feet. Not with the cartridge, but with the pallets and the carpet, right, and all the other things that comes along. Yeah, so it's, it's not too much, because we've got to leave other spaces around the, the property, the thing is, how much of the acre and a half is actually usable?
Yeah, well, I guess, that's something that you certainly will get the staff off, but that, that's not a big, an over section.
Okay, so I figure it would be enough for me, a little more than they probably need, which would be good.
Yeah, okay, any other questions before we, no, okay, uh, thank you very much, Lord, for your, for your notes. My fault, my fault, my, my. Mister Grant, sorry, I know somebody, I guess. Um, anyways, I appreciate the, the, the delegation, we have a great conversation about it, I think, so, I guess the next step should be more of the staff, now that we've seen this, you know, we have a conversation with staff, and see where that goes.
Yes, thank you very much.
Thank you, you're welcome. Thank you for writing all the issues, well, yes.
Yes, yes, okay.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. And see what I'm doing there. Right, thank you.
All right, moving on to number six, six A, Land Move, which is a land use plan. And we have, number one, we have an application for severance at six sixteen Hurley Road. Um, to the C B C, I guess, you'll give us, I want to do that, let us get our minds on this one.
Thank you, through the chair, so we have seven top application, the forty twenty three, this proposes the creation of a new lot in the town's policy area at six, it's fifty minus sixteen Hurley Road. Uh, the property is about five, about acres, so the single dwelling garage, it's serviced by a private volunteer. There is a large horse on the south west boundary of the property, and it would land over the southwest corner. Uh, the application proposes the view of five point four five acre lot with a hundred and then six point seven meters frontage on her total for three dwelling. The being lot, we can be existing, we will lay broad, well, subject on a four point one meter lot with over eighty eight meters frontage. The available plan permits limited density residential development policy area, minimal distance separation, set up maximum capacity for three large facilities identified within two hundred meters of the subject plant, and from property to those setback, we, the lot will need those setbacks. And application agreeing for archaeological potential using criteria established by the Ministry of Heritage, Sport, Tourism and Culture Industries. Yeah, it's something to be screening checklists to the property, and it identifies the site as an archaeological potential. What, or some of the property, adding to the D S S community agent package as well. Um, for the zoning by law, before search, and it made lots meet the minimum size in front of the products for the rural goal. Um, no concerns with combined two or zoning by, that we bought, or the team. So the, the fat arrangement is including your curbing in favor of the severance with the condition of the architectural support is.
All right, so, you have any more questions?
Uh, just wondering, through the chair, is there other houses built along there on that side of the road?
Uh, yes, please, change.
Uh, yes, thank you, uh, really, Chair, um, number nine, on, 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 are there, are there present, uh, fast water source, in a creative problem? For project here, that, that is, that's a drainage ditch, that's classified under the Minister of Culture and Sports, that they have to have that archaeological. Even, even, even in, like a like a ditch?
Check. If it's a drainage ditch today, it wasn't always a drainage ditch, that, the water course there in the map from eighteen hundreds, that shows a water course.
Just have a hard time accepting, I mean, has she, has she went ahead and got this?
No, she has not completed that process yet, just those creation.
Okay, uh, and question number two I have is, uh, the part that she wants of seven is three hundred and fifty feet long, I just want to make sure we're going in opposite direction in a better direction where we're cutting it from two point four acres to one acres and a hundred and fifty square meters on it. Is she aware of that, so when she goes to her lawyer, they can severance both of these, she could get two lots out of this, part two, is that possible?
Uh, through the chair, we, I'm not, I don't think that she is aware of the, um, the changes of committees proposing to the vision plan. Certainly, the competition, uh, many near eleven years, probably, issue for yours.
I just hate to have it, get this on the top, uh, three fifty, when she can get two seven slots, that's all I'm, one concern, but if we're going in that direction. If, if she has plans, and she wants to celebrate away, okay, just seems to me it too lots of, that's what her plans are, so. I have a problem.
There. Uh, to the C B C, the answer on number nine, I'm assuming they fill the ballot, that filled that out by themselves. Yeah, and so they recognize that, that it's within three hundred meters of a, of a water course. And reading what it says in number ten, you know, obviously, it fits in with that guideline, you know, there's two or more of those distinctive features. And reading what it says in number ten, you know, obviously it fits in with that guideline, you know, there's two or more of those distinctive features. So when they do the uh the archaeological assessment. Is it like a stage one, a stage two, a stage three? What is that, and does archaeological assessment mean it's pretty broad in that term?
Sure, um it's that it would be a a one and um there would be certain criteria that met for the um stage. Stage two and then there's more involved in the stage two and then people just need to agree if there were uh.
And do they? Do they understand exactly what that means? We had that conversation with them, so. If you get to stage two and stage three, you know, every test bit that's in. Every six hundred and some stuff like that, do they know what?
Uh, I I couldn't see it.
Yeah. Required. The assessment is required. Like they've checked the box to say that it's a water horse, it's required because of that Ontario.
Through the chair, it's in our official policies required, obviously, and policies for direct. We use this check that says this rating, if it could not be for required.
Yeah, okay, I just wanna make sure that it's good.
So, Mr. Jim, you would mind? So if in the official plan, that whenever you're so close to a water horse?
Yeah, through the chair. We use the the nation screening document to see if there are um I use that would be not required. For example, if you look at number eight, it asks, if the entire property or property area is subject to repetitive settlement, settlement, and it's disturbing. And if you enter the estimate, then no assessment is required and you don't complete the rest of the check. So you don't go on to to another one. So I mean, there there are times when the severance is proposed and we don't ask for it because it when we get to number eight and we don't have to go in there, but people have to for that water course. There are also times where we look, we see a water course and I can reference a really old map and I see that water course maybe wasn't there many years ago. It's may not have archaeological thinking, so we we kind of apply some um bets to to the checklist as well. In this case, I don't, I don't see a possibility for not for requiring this.
Uh just for your traditional, so is there a statute of limitations? But you said there was a lot going back and saying two hundred or something like that. Is there a, but it ceases to be effective or?
In in fact, this checklist was aided in the past or present one course that uh the left. Or if there are there uh land state formations that were indicated or may have been. Water course, we also have last bit.
Gotcha, I was just trying to get more information, so so, you know, is it like past two hundred years? Um, okay, any other questions? It's like, no, um. Hey, well, we have motion here then. Recommendation part maybe. So the recommendation, do I need to do the recommendation? Uh recommendation that committee recommend, that council. Committee, because I can really recommend that council recommend in favor of severance application being forty dash twenty three. In can, it was a condition that an archaeological assessment is undertaken by a licensed archaeologist. Having regard for the archaeological potential of the severance lands as they are located entirely. Within three hundred meters of the square waterfront, or sorry, water course. And that the township received confirmation that the assessment has been entered in by the the registry, by the Ministry of Heritage, Sport, Tourism and Culture. So I. We've got this part out, seconded by. Um, okay, any other questions? Okay, I'm very. Okay, this. So and this is where we would have had six A two, uh but we're gonna move past that one as we take off the agenda. So to number three, action, uh as an action. Uh feedback on the proposed ritual, then it's statement uh to the C B C.
Can we, through the chair, um at the major shortly creating, we propose we've um we've requested the staff for giving the draft conventional planning statement to confirm that. Um the change that was proposed aligned with the coming vulnerable and that crap. Probably be prepared for company three. Go, our review of those who opposed change did that stuff out where most from the third article was provided council. At their regular meeting on H one nine. And that promised the period of consideration. And when council committee comments, they have the comments um waiting good wording to express that that was important proposal. And also we're but that the people have had a period of policies. They really desired to the closing of the commenting period of that on June fifth. Before council panel presented the province, there was some uh changes to the political agriculture policy. And that's in response to that, the party committee, and they're trying to get them and then they extended all the support. So they're working through a few of those that committee council will review, revise comments, support and you know, to the problem. Or basically on June six. See the province update, the draft plan document to include those natural periods policies that were previously not included in that draft. Um so I review the national heritage policies and don't see anything that's to be written in that. Um. So the ground comments, this is the items for consideration are attached to this report. I still would not comment here, then highlighted what was changed after the end of May nine council meeting. But then um I've also processed some that I felt be not the longer be be valid.
To be on studying, I I'm more of a past statement. I actually just noticed that before I came over that was highlighted, do you know, look at. But i- is this the statement where it deals with uh the number of severance that province was the anticipating that they would allow agricultural like that? It's as far as they've been correct. And and is that part not was washed?
Yes.
Completely.
Well, it it would appear so, we found a letter on. The part here in response to the under consideration about of of a culture, the um. The comments were, the the most promising statement had actually been revised online, you just have these letters and force allow outside and give these approach.
But I just wanted to hear your opinion because I heard very same thing about another plan or so. You know, what really amazes me is, you know, uh we've got a Edersburg as a council now that is. Willing to look at her, you know, create a land and then allowing more development and actually. Encouraging more residential development in our municipality. And then they turn it around and they do this whole agriculture review. And they start stripping some of the rural land away from Edersburg, that could potentially be used for future development. It's just, it's almost like talking on both sides of your mouth at the same time. So, you know. I I'm all for development and I'm all for agricultural, prime agricultural land. Um I'm not in favor of making agricultural land that isn't there. But I just think that if the rural lands continue to go into prime agricultural land and rural lands, and I'm thinking classified seven, which is not good. Goes into agriculture, it's really got us. What a real caveau, I mean, development in the north end of the township where I think that is what will take place when capital starts to come come on the surface. If there's any way we can put something like that in this, in our answer. Back, you know, I would agree, I would agree with them, you know, it's. I suppose.
Yeah, you can, we're gonna talk about that later, so. Um. There you go. Those are the nerves.
I'm not, I'm opposing it. Review it again, and if there's any way that we can put in that, you know, we need to save them of our property for for development. It's. So sub oils and go go the go in the county land in the garden, you know. So anything after four, you know, to be done in in rural, so if they can work that in somewhere, that would be great.
Okay, so I think that's something of the more to be uh for when we get into the discussion of the. Uh, Mr. Mr. Hello, Bob. So. And the day.
Again, I will last in. Okay, that's okay. I just wanna hear one of those.
Fair enough. Mr. Dewar?
No.
I think uh six A or six things will. Uh who go or five things on my head.
Uh alright, Mr. Stone. You're good. No comments, eh? Um, so to staff, my understanding of the letter from Mr. Clark, um in twenty, they're not in twenty. At June fifth was in response to the uh to the O F A pressure. Um and that all that the letter did, it didn't wash anything. It just said that it would allow for further commenting until, if I'm not mistaken, I think it was sixteen days, which would be August fifth. Is that? So, Ben said earlier that. Um. That the government washed it, and that's not my understanding, that it was just to allow for further commenting. A period to to allow our FA and and like the A industry to. Have a longer time to another sixty days to to field comments. My understanding was that nothing changed, so. Um I'm just looking for clarification because we've removed the words that we support the origin of E P S for egg land. And I'm not really sure that that's true on this council's part, I think. We've heard everybody say that they actually are in support of what was originally written by the province. So, and just before we actually submit a letter. I just wanna make sure the decision that we're making is based on accurate info, so. Can you speak to that?
Well, through the chair, I could say that um I I haven't seen these changes in the draft. E P S, so I think your your preference now have been made. My understanding of this letter is something would it would be made, but it could be incorrect. The draft E P S didn't change, we think those.
Like, to my understanding. The only thing that Minister Park's letter did was it. That it allowed sixty more days for commenting, really, that's my understanding of it. And if that's the case, I mean, from my perspective, again, just mine, it's. I think my name was on it and I'll sign whatever council gives me direction to sign, but I mean, if that's the case, um. I think. From my original thought or my original thought process was was that it would include the e- agricultural. You know, the changes that they were proposing to the agricultural area, we generally supported those. So from my perspective, that. Scratch that one would be fine, I get that the natural heritage policies and stuff like that are are you reviewed them and I think, you know, we can scratch that, but I if. As long as what I'm thinking is correct, I would prefer to see.
Including.
Yeah, I know it. You know, I I didn't read for six, wait, I heard it personally, I'm gonna see where you're going in the different, outright saying, we're not gonna do it. Uh I guess what I'm looking for is if the people wanna leave that statement in. Um. I just wanna take something out. That works. Um. Is there, is there any way we can? That. Like, I'm a hundred percent, when when do we have to submit that, August? August, so this one's back at council, we're fine. I mean, hundred percent supportive of 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 the letter, the way that it's written. The only thing that I would ask is can we contact um M M H and find out? If they're going to allow any agricultural severances or or not, or if they're gonna change that through. It's bill ninety seven, not P P S, but this is common in both those. Like if they're going to allow those extra agricultural severances or or if they've washed that as suggested. Can we find out that for sure?
So because I'm asked that question, um.
Well, if they're if they've already washed it, then there's no sense in me saying we can take that out, including the agricultural part, because it doesn't change it. If they're not washing it, not leaving it in, I prefer that we supported the document that's as true.
Through the chair, I'll ask for.
But I think through the through the chair, since there has not been the updated release. I would say there had no final decision. So all I'm asking for is can you ask? We will, we we can certainly do our best to. And so then at council, I mean, the letter could be exactly the same as it is, just with two options, one including the words in, including the area and one not. We may be able to simplify that even more if dealing is. But if it hasn't been washed in common periods of things. Is is the end of this, maybe like one including agricultural area inserted. If if a farmer, like and I'll speak to myself, I'm not speaking to anyone else, but if. If a farmer can separate pieces of their agricultural land so that one of their children was allowed to fill the home on that land, maybe a generational farmer, of course, I would support that a hundred percent. Street of Jenerton, man, with the exact same concern and the same assumption that we're saying it. But if if there's a possibility, yeah, I don't need that. I'm gonna maybe listen, that's the reality, if if staff thinks it, because maybe it's my understanding was that it wasn't, that's all. And I may be just not good at it as much as you guys are. Pretty much, I'm sure, so that's 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 uh that's good that we're asking that statement back in there, that that statement in there and talk about. Uh our desire to have the ability for a farmer to be able to separate out property for for family, so. Just mirrors up your. Just, no, 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 that's the way it's written, yeah, that's the way they know, that's their general intention of it, if that's the way that's I would support it, ask the people, so you good about that? Okay. Uh alright, any other questions, comments on this one? Alright, um fair enough, so uh. This was a action, um. So with uh I guess to have that action, then we see. And it would be as amended, right? The committee recommended council authorize the very sign the attached. Letter has amended and direct staff to submit the comment letter to the province of Ontario. We did remember to registry Bureau, fire the August fourth plane, we read that one. Do I remember on that? Um I just wanna make sure that that accurately reflects the conversation you just had was or what I was asking. That give us one to include those words or not include those words, because it doesn't, I would prefer that it can move in a way that it did.
Through the chair, I mean, um, this is just a recommendation going to council, it's not law enforcement to say that the beyond laws.
So could be obviously, yeah.
But this recommended to get it to the table, because.
Okay. I'm a good. Okay, I have a second. One second, I can't. And then any other comments, questions? Okay, all in favor? Okay. Great. Uh and then we move on to number six A four, uh. This, first the action between. This was the action between the national vegetation. So, uh, we'll talk about this one.
Thank you, good to share. Um, this is a all of the result of the fifty eight, which came out. Three, I think it was term. Um, it was a requirement in your. The block would require. Two seventy that all of this should be created. Um, there was a transition period with many counties that had just finished a review of their official plan and zoning by law. That jumped on it right away, um, after sessions many times with our policy advisors at the city office. As an example, that you were in the review process, the very early stages of reviewing the plan. By the time it's updated, only by I mean, a bad update. Um, for the outcomes, the time which actually you treat them, the national education policy requirement have happened. Um, so this policy addresses those areas, and we try to make it. Sort of on the best strategy policies, as well as information, because there is a climate change plan through the county and the competition with. F C that they support above the information, um, we agree with the incentive to be processed with S N C to make sure that we come forward with the contact. And they provide a lot of diagnosis goals for it. Um, so with this policy, it provides principles to understand the fact that it's standing in the tree community. Uh, community engagement, education. That as well as trying to. Have a ton of environmental, the increase of earthy, the period zone, prevent erosion. Um, also things that we even incorporated into our C N Ps and our prices in regards to. Improving the long road, the other communities and sustaining sound barriers, outlands and such. Um, so the policy that the guiding framework, there is no law in this per se, we let it open for a lot of pieces for the line where you did. And provide the function of the, um, areas that we can do with as we need. As a part of the basis, sort of applying to different site plans, or subdivisions, things like that, as well as address our tree community. Along the roadways, evens, etc., and it provides a guiding principle for future developers as well.
Very much.
Uh. Uh, to the chair or whoever is able to answer. So when we are looking at things like clearing some of the growths that the old canal, does this policy interest us in any way? We wanna try to do things like that.
I think I wouldn't say that. Um, it's more for, um, being doing that, really, the tree community, I I call it, it's more just. Uh, brushing and kind of overgrowth. There's more protection of the actual vegetation areas that along, um, the waterways and other areas, watercourses that are very important to. Prevent erosion, as well as think of like large trees. If you're along that, I really, I would need to bring it up very quickly, actually, those things the policy, where this culture itself has appeared, um. Trees and production.
Um, I think it's great policy, I mean, when, uh, as you, what we're going through now. Horse fires and so on in Ontario. We we lose a decade of 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 trees and, you know, of shrubs. My my concern is. Will this affect if a farmer wants a clear cut, how many acres of bush?
To share, it's not, it's not.
Nothing to do with agriculture. Good to hear that. And another, uh, I seen guidelines, uh. We have to do where we're gonna go. Uh, we're just not gonna start cutting trees and trimming like we did down in Marlesville, is that right?
So, to share that, that is a service that the township does, that is still. But we're not gonna go just clearing up trees. Any shade or harm in a random place. Um, if a tree needs to be cut down or trimmed, you have the permission in there to do that. It just means that if you're clearing an area. Um, we're trying to replace those trees as our goal, as well as if there's a tree that, uh, individual calls. Say that this is, you know, fall down, if there's a reason, we will go and stack that. And determine whether or not it should be maintenance or other mechanisms to support that tree, or does it be cleared because of this? These are.
But we do, we do have here in 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 the policy, we wanna, we wanna pass on the maintenance, means all worker operation related, trimming, spreading. Injecting fertilizing treatments, bringing a tree, of course, the good arbitrary practice, so. It is, is on, you know, we are asking to do that on page forty seven on their maintenance program. And going down the highway, um, with that cutter, zoom, zoom, zoom. Isn't, I don't think, good arbitrary practice, that's all. So are we gonna get somebody in here that helps? With some big trees?
With really share that. That is a perfect. Time for working points.
But it's gonna be part of our vital, that's all I'm saying.
I understand that. Um, if you look under our tree maintenance section. There's nothing that we need to. We try our best to reach those goals before we have to do the whole new tree, but those could be considered.
I think it's great. I think we're going in the right direction. If we follow our own vital, that's all I, then I guess that's all I'm trying to get across. If we do. I do diligence and celebrate trees, that's all. I'm I'm I'm, I I think it's just great, great stuff, and I think, I I just, I'm all excited, and I went to. Of course, I didn't really complain on Marlesville Road about the incidents today, and he was turned to death. And he's. More than happy to help us, and that's what he does for a living, so, we got no charter, by the way.
Thank you. Um. So we. To staff, we we, the reason this is coming forward is we have to have. Yeah, I have this policy in place.
The chair has corrected your bill sixty eight, they changed the F C to seven, we agree on all.
And is it specific? Because I've looked up a few of these, um. Policies of our surrounding this palace, and there is a striking similar to others. Is there a framework in which it's laid out that we had to follow?
Uh, to the chair, back when this was first married, uh, S N C did a. Overall framework, guiding principle, and then a couple of months ago, we started developing this, um, I thought from one of their clerk, innocent one. Um, where the lesson. It's all with the county and S N C at the same time, to get more current.
Okay, when we have them in place?
Um, there is no deadline, there was one back when the deal was implemented. Um, but because we were doing our review at that point, you don't have a deadline out, which there are, there's a major.
Um. I'm gonna need a little help. So, so walk me through this. My dad wants me to come and trim the shrubs in front of his house. I have to ask the township commission to trim the shrubs in front of my house. Okay, so what, how do I tell what I'm allowed to do and what I'm not allowed to do?
To the chair, it's not really implementing the general ordinance. We're trying to here towards new development, well, that in regards to subdivision by number four to ten. Uh, places where the betterness for new development.
And municipal property, so.
We we don't. There is a right to begin here in regards to, um. What we'd like the public to do, um, but you can't necessarily go and say, you're gonna be fine, because that's true, that's not our whole call. It's your private property, it's more for the future development. And if a farmer comes in. They have done a whole area, we don't make any use of this, and that's because the erosion can be included. Um, natural education trees.
And. So, right, so two concerns that have been voiced earlier, one is his gallo pellman, one is roadside brushing. And I certainly have my notes, the roadside brushing, because we, we certainly, I think I read the word injured. But in in bylaw, and we certainly do. You know, I mean, it's done for a reason, it's done to widen, widen the road, I understand completely why it is done. Are we gonna have to consult with arborists now to be able to do our roadside brushing? Is that what our policy is actually telling us we have to do? That's the way I read it. I just wanna make sure that. I mean, there certainly are some trees there that are bigger than. You know, seven centimeters around, or whatever the number is, seven inches around, that get cleaned out, and. My understanding is. You know, especially the way that it's written, says that we need to consult arborists to do that. I'm just worried that every time you wanna do a research, that we're gonna have to pay for a study of an arborist to do that.
So, if you reverse the meaning, it's under our. Why, these are just guiding principles.
So, sorry.
We're taking a proactive approach.
Yep.
But there's nothing saying the township shall do this, have to do this. This is a practice.
This seems super critical.
It is.
I mean, I understand that we're putting a policy in place because we have to put one in place, but then if we don't follow the policy to put it in place. It doesn't make a whole heck of a lot of sense to put these places in person, that's. That's sort of where I'm coming from. I get that that's the way the world works a little bit these days, but. I mean. Again, being a small government guy and less restriction on people's rights, our own rights, our own properties, I. I struggle with putting rules that we're not gonna follow.
You know, it just says practice, good arbitrary practice, as you say. Well, we gotta follow, whatever I would practice, I don't know what it is, I'm not a. I'm not an expert on that. But I'm just saying, I don't think it means that having to tap one come down every time you wanna turn a tree.
To the chair, if you look under section six point three, third, fourth, and the goal, and if they're dead or dying, these have a dangerous tree, so it could be, um. And that's the guidelines.
Good.
Or. Again, under the operation of the top. Book order, the yard orders, the general.
And so, all right, so then by six point four, then we're getting to where I was. So by six by six point four, every time we drive along, and we're doing roadside ditching. And roadside widening your maintenance, if there's a tree in the in the maintenance area, and we cut it down, does that mean we're gonna replace one for one, a tree somewhere else?
Again, to the chair, if we can change that. It's just what we drafted about, my other words, and I consulted with, what were the criteria? That's practice, that's what these recommendations.
They're they're where we don't actually. Like, compare us tree habitat to Toronto, and I think we got a thousand times over, probably. All right, but, I mean, that's. Sorry, sorry, volunteer, sorry, guys, and he's taking, he's doing what I wanna do, it's going on. Thanks, um. I'm all for planting more trees. I think we we can do our part. We have probably have areas where we planted. I just struggled with the guideline. Says that if somebody, one of our residents goes along, counts that we cut seventeen trees down, we don't plant seventeen trees, we're breaking their own bylaws, and why put our own policies and. Why put policies in place if we're. Or have things in those policies if we're we're not actually playing.
Understandable. Um, we then definitely adjust the section, if you can possibly. Feel so, they require change, you get that on our bylaw. Um, again, you're just gonna do, you know, goal that. Bone of the best of these goals, we're sort of gonna do. Uh, that way, it's worded with the way that is where it's.
So, um. Then, um, if I may, and I think I I prefer to move a motion for for deferral of of this. Um, for for another, you know, for till the next meeting, so that, um. We have time, so we can adjust, uh, things that are in it, and and if there's no. Reason or there's no base to do this, let's play, let's put a policy forward that actually. Um, addresses the concerns that follows that we have, and guess, and it's done. You know, the way that that it should be on us now. Or change it, and not fix it, sorry. So, motion. Okay, so what we're just talking, yep, that's fair. Uh, so what we're talking about is mostly talking about not necessarily, you know, loosening up the language around the one for one tree replacements. Um, we're talking about, uh. Uh, the other one we're talking about was, was that, sir, was was. My side, my my idea would be that we're gonna have a discussion, I'm gonna get a month, and everybody has a month, and once things got to changes that they want, and then you could. Go through that next one, so we don't, we won't expect to see anything different than for next meeting, except for just a break, right? Yeah, okay, so that's your, I mean, it's your recommendation, uh, for Pearl, and your second, and that, okay. Do you publish your best?
Um, I was just. Thinking of those, um, hearing those, I just started going inside roads, and what you find, a lot of clients is that people who don't have the education, they don't have. And that can be a massive concern, because we don't have the education, select, and and what they can be. You know, if they're hiring students to go and do this kind of work, and they're just totally, you know, I guess, I'm saying, quite a mess. Um, so I think it's nice, especially if you're talking about along the canal or along to that zone, select. Having and suddenly there with, like, an arborist, living in education. Um, there's also, our ash trees are infected and all over the place, dying like crazy, they're saying that we're not gonna have it. In a short amount of time, so I'm not sure if you'd like to look at the program, whereas, because you're gonna have to cut down. A ton of ash trees, and you can see when you look at the canopy, they're all dying right now, um, because they're infected. Um, so when the ash trees come down, well, we look at replacing them.
We did that down.
Not with ash.
We did that down waterfront.
Yeah.
Look a bunch of ash trees down, we planted.
Yeah, and replanted, just for the ash trees specifically, because they're, you know, we're gonna lose lot, not all.
I don't think we put, I don't think we planted ash trees, did we, uh, Mr. Senior? Just, I guess I don't wanna get off topic, so. But we did get rid of, we did get rid of it once.
Thinking about what what you wanna replace, you know, yeah, where is, um. Because I I really like what you brought there. I understand your point, but like I said, as a resident, sometimes you see. You know, um, staff come in and. Because they they don't know better. So I I like the idea of having a professional, sometimes we get certain areas, that's all I got.
I just had a few comments. I've got a little different scenario than the mayor has. Uh, I have a nature parcel of land, have a sign. And I have a fifty foot spruce tree. That's scaring me with all the windows we're having. And I don't want to fall on top of my house. Do I have a big pollution number? Is that already done? But I did plant a tree, you know. Actually, I think it's a good policy to have because I I'm like the deputy mayor, I think we need trees. And uh. As the farms start to get bigger and acquire more property, even everybody knows what's happening. The patchwork was taken out, the budget was taken out. And I think that the other areas of the town should continue with. Finding key trees.
Well, also to be mined. Well, I know the conservation authority for staff.
So. Okay, so we have a motion to basically bring this back to next committee and discussion. Um for about there and second if I can smell. Um do you know other proposals? So. It is, so we'll bring that back to CDC in in August at the discussion for uh. Uh more ideas to. Uh okay, so then um. So moving on to number six, eight, five, discussion of a grant opportunity for the Housing Accelerator Fund and the C A O is.
So. There is a grant available um of work. Uh C N C one has incorporated um of housing and salary fund. The um. Mission in equal open, it's supposed to be in June. I don't think that it is open yet. It's gonna be open for one five days, but it's not. Even though it's not open, if we're going to pay advantage of these houses, we've got to start now because of the other application process that's had from the R. Um not easy for you. So um there are two application things funding program in large urban, in the small rural, um group industry, we was all under the small. Small, I think, but a combination of thousand. Um I was really requirements. Would um we need to include an action plan that outline the um. By rural target, okay, we need a next plan. We're gonna need a housing um. Needs assessment. We don't need that for our application. We'll need that within your three of the grants. Um and we'll need to do some other work about um. Our uh growth targets. How many homes are we expected to build? Those in Edinburgh, Cardinal, um without the housing salary plan and how we can be expected to build with a housing accelerator fund as long as. Um the housing accelerator fund gives us a a growth of. I think ten percent. Um and if you're appropriate, then um we were the eligible. We need a permission plan with at least five um. Five initiatives in it and the um in the agenda package, there's some. Suggestions that from the C N C about what those items could be. There's a few of those that we could consider as um as part of our achievement. If we were to um. The amount of funding is based on. How many homes that that um but the grant would. The grant would need for us, I guess, so. I forget what we uh. What we agreed with it.
Yeah, I think with respect to the funding, there's a base funding amount that you would have up to twenty twenty thousand. Volus funding banking. Equation.
And I want to, yes, the base coming is twenty thousand per unit that we would be building with the. With the accelerator plan. We receive the funds over, I think, four years, like twenty five percent in your way, just referring the card to be the point exactly. Um and and so on. Um we can spend money, not necessarily on items within our action plan, but those would be actual. Um I think we've been running, we also spend money on. Um construction that would support housing, water, respite, construction or. Fire power, rose trees and anything like that. So um we we can also spend money on items that were in action and obviously would. Um so is. Yeah, we're just gonna take some thought. We're gonna need to develop our action plan and required initiatives. Um. For one way before we take far into this grant and start to work on those initiatives and constructing our action plans. If this is great, something that has a good. For us to work on to.
Standing capacity this time is not available. Completely, we're we're gonna need extra points for this. That can open this action. In the photo box later. Uh potentially planner, we may, we we may need to utilize uh. And. So, questions.
Housing in affordable housing and using correct grammar, but it's. Is at the county level. So what what is clear? Do you put it if you apply for something and account to file for the same thing?
Yeah, the county is actually eligible to apply for this grant, but they uh. Um the uh or the housing coordinator. I've reached into municipalities, um including us to apply and comparing support where she had issues. Um guidance and information um that may be that may be helpful to us if we anywhere we need an application or. Brand against that player or or even the best, we have support from the counties. There's just not.
That's weird, so it's like, well, so it's it's, you keep in mind, this is about a housing accelerator. There is a point of the talks about. Um the talks of affordable housing, but it's not a, this is about getting more house built as well. So it's not just.
I'm staying in the counties and more dollars. You know, the county to ten municipalities to draw on where we, the members were current to draw on. So we could let you get a great scale done, but you had the whole campus involved, whether the counter really wanted to go. It's kind of weird, right? This is a big project, guys.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, you know, that's insane. You know, like the social work right there. Um, yes, I think it's great. I, you know, considering United Way came in here a couple of years ago and said the three main things that Edward Edwards for Cardinal. Needed was housing or the three concerns that people had was housing, affordable housing. Food insecurity and mental health issues, and all those things are tied together. You know, um I think that at the municipal level, there are things that we can do for our community. With regard to developing affordable housing, and I think that's what this grant is designed for. Um yes, it's a short turnaround. Um and it would be a lot of work and it would require a lot of commitment. But from my perspective and what I see in the community, you know, um. The division between the have and the have not is just getting greater and greater and greater. And you have a lot of people who work in organizations where they make minimum wage or just above, and if you have two people working minimum wage just above. Um according rent, yes, and food. Um at the cost that they are is extremely difficult. So I think it's responsible. To to at least attempt to get this money. Um it's unfortunate that it's being offered in such a short amount of time, and I guess that's by design to make it difficult. I don't know. Um but I'm I'm all for it. It's the how, you know, but if there's a role, I guess there's a.
Uh, okay, so I'm. So I'm starting with this. And then I'm tired. I don't know actually what it is. So I don't, I don't want to be a dummy here, but I. Like in my eyes, by taking what we did at the Lockwood at Meadowland subdivision. And allowing them to make all the changes that they made. Um and asking them to incorporate affordable into that, but allowing them to build from what was started out as forty or fifty simple family homes into two hundred. Over many instances or whatever it is now, whatever um. Was sort of doing our part. So um. How does this then fall into something different? Or what exactly is this in relation to that? Or does it have no relationship to it at all?
The challenges need to be new projects that haven't been started already in order to be helpful for one of the, if our action is sort of. Go to page fifty nine to sixty one, we included a list, and here's the examples. We could pick five of these and write an action plan for each five of them. And then remember something you won't cut going to pay for us in that.
And so.
Already did.
So then I'm gonna fall back.
If we were starting before, uh I saw with the.
Okay, so let me get to different things. So so we have an approved lock maskers that. Right, with single family homes on all of the lots there. So if we put a plan in in place that encouraged greater density on on that. Like, could they apply if they came back to us and said, okay, we now want to build, you know, triplexes on my little single family homes instead of. Instead of that, it increases density, you know, needs affordable targets. You know, it does that that sort of thing. Is that something that? Like that would fall into this? And how would financially benefit them? Like, well, where is the? It's a housing fund. I mean, I read that it's twenty thousand plus a top up at the end of. Be seven thousand or something like that. So is the builder getting twenty seven thousand to make these changes? How does it, how does it, like? I'm not quite sure how it works.
That's okay, true, true. So if we need, if one of our, whatever our action plan was to um make a. A plan, we're in that subdivision, could have triplexes instead of singles, and we calculate how many extra homes is our action plan bringing? Um you have that plan. Um well, it would be, we're one hundred now, we have next to one hundred for. It was all high flights and stuff, so there's two hundred homes times twenty thousand dollars a home, and that's for the money we get. If we can set up a structure, maybe not, maybe it would be the new fireball. Maybe like we did, like that's the fund that we get. However, my action plan to get there, but getting to try that, so it's possibly cost money to, so we should throw that money into that plan that we. Created, so um the capacity developers can get the benefits. More use to the benefits, uh some of the money could be spent.
Money comes back to the township for infrastructure costs. That just pause for a sec, cause I read this, you know, as I saw the accelerator part of this, right? And so if I were just, and and we'll take, we'll take the lock maskers up. Yes, because we know a lot of, because we just started on topic, so. It's it's ninety six homes is what it's on, or it's an over. And you know, if let's just say that their current plan is to build ten houses a year or something for the next ten years, and I don't know what their plan is. And I don't know if anybody at staff knows yet, but if if that, if if doing something like that, they were gonna build over the next four years, so I think it's a four year window. They were gonna build forty homes. But somehow, you know, if 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 they said, you know, we had a little incentive to, you know, the infrastructure or something like that to help out with. We can maybe build on ninety six of those, or that would mean that fifty six homes could be extra, would be built in that four year period because of funding. Um which would be like one point one million dollars. Is that a fair rate? Look at this as well, or I. Either, maybe you know, everything. You know, well. And and to be, to be fair, we're still a little bit with uh. With 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 this funding, how we would. Put an action plan in in place to actually see that funding and then. How we would distribute that funding. So like a capital improvement, let's say we updated our our C I P. And and they've included, uh you know, uh. An ability to uh apply for, let's say. Covering connection fees for multi, you know, uh semi Nash or. You know, or let's whatever the case may be, if that's developed. That'd be something that, yes, if we, if we were applying to that funding and we we just say that, we would end up with. For 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 more additional units, we could utilize. You know, you could put a plot only available. You know, for an application based instead of to offset some of those costs. Which hopefully in return. Make that in product fully more affordable. Not gonna say affordable housing. But maybe that's some of that capital, you know, maybe it's more.
Let me marry it. Uh I'm familiar with this, uh and knowing these lines because uh. Meet with this Jackson Wyatt cabin, he told me this is coming out. He also, it's another one that's really good for us. It's what they call the uh Green Municipality Fund. And he did planning grants of the twenty five thousand, bought a steady grants of the hundred seventy five thousand and so on. So I think with both of these, I think we should really look into the Green Municipality Fund also. As a municipality, if we're gonna go on to this, because it it's. It's a short period. I think it's a month, isn't it? They they gave us two.
For the.
Yeah, yeah, not.
So they haven't, they haven't said this both times.
Yeah, so and like I said, I gotta hear cabin all all that, and I've been meeting up on it. Uh especially uh especially Green Municipality, it really works for affordable housing. It is actually for affordable housing, and so is this because it helps offset the more reach from C N C.
So more houses are there, I think.
It's, yeah. Sorry, the 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 biggest. Probably you're gonna find in any of this. It has to be that uh net zero. Qualified for a lot of, yeah, this is what they're trying to do, net zero, work on everything. Low, affordable housing and low energy costs back to get into affordable house. You know, that's that's a whole goal, wanting to do so.
Okay, so I have something on top. Just a couple of questions and somehow it'll really back to to the deputy mayor. Certainly support. Know the word cabin, and I think that there's a big future for that, for township, for sure. Where W D S gone and spoken to Jackson, and I think that's great. But to staff. For the half um. Doing, so there's a list of initiatives, right? So we would have to pick a certain amount of those initiatives. And then our plan would relate back to those initiatives. Right, when.
Yeah, correct.
We have to pick five of those initiatives. So I guess then that's where my question comes back to the deputy mayor, then. You're supporting this, you want this forward. What five of those are suggesting that we support them? Because. I think it's instrumental, cabin is there. Is who we're putting this forward thinking of. Uh with them in particular, how does this relate back or what five of these relates back to cabin? And how we can support that. On these singles a lot, there's a lot, there's twenty or more here. I'm not sure which.
Are you talking about the homes like the multi?
I'm talking about the incentive list that's on page fifty sixty nine of sixty seven.
Fifty nine or fifty six.
Fifty nine of sixty seven. Yeah, so there's a list of. So the idea is that we have to support five of them. This is that we'd have to pick five of those. So like, that's sort of what I'm getting at. If you may, is which five? Now, is it the five? We need to pick the five and a half, or is? So I was wondering if we were gonna get guidance, or is that what our grant writers are gonna talk?
So you need to select five initiative. Develop. An action plan for each initiative and combination of five. Be your overall passion.
When we're doing that, patients. So that's not enough to us. What is it? Well, I, well, it's gonna maybe come back to us when I mean, when we're filling out the application.
The only, yeah. So, so the big question is, you know, I mean, you know, going back to the scope here, the question is, will we, you know, do some funding initially to scope this to even sort of what? I mean, that's, that's the first ask.
We can't, we can't spend money to, to scope it. We don't see if it's worth it cuz we don't have time. We have forty five days.
So we have a meeting next on July twelfth, the C O S and there is. Is there a potential of this to be? To be part of a discussion there to see if there's. A group of us to work together, like the three municipalities to work together? Do we know if they're doing one of these themselves?
I'm not aware.
This is a big study to do on our own. It's a big.
Well, it's not, it's not, it's not really a study. It's really, it really is.
Yeah. Okay. If we want it or we don't.
If, if you want to look at, for here's one, for instance, implemented revised parking requirement such as reduced for parking spaces for new cars. Right now, we don't have reduced parking requirements. Is that gonna be a new, new initiative? But then in. What? Right? But that, but, but I think that, that, that's something that's like. It's, it's not something that from a, from a staff level that we said, we couldn't at least introduce it. Do, do, do I think that we have the, the, the? The time to, to, to commit, invent it, kind of, so that, because it's not only to avoid a funny man. The, the action plan that we're going to be able to invest all of the resources over that window of. Through your window to ensure that we achieve the outcomes. Some of the rest, rest assured, you don't achieve the uh influx in additional housing. The engine of it, you receive all of that money. It, 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 it is, it is a, it's a performance result base.
Right, but some of them are pretty easy to support. Like, number one, I'll be, the number one bullet obviously doesn't work. We, we don't have. Rapid transit stations are reducing.
Correct.
Right? Well, it says, or it says, or it says, and reduce carbon. So I mean, you can take that right off the list. Allowing increased housing density, increased number of units and numbers of stories in single lot, including promoting missing middle. Housing forms typically building less than four stories. That seems like a very. Am I wrong in thinking that?
The initiative, but yeah, for, uh, for, for putting it in this.
We encourage you to, to, to use accessible, accessible growing. I think that's something that we're. You know, we're trying to compare this. But I think some of these people have easier.
If I may, you know, when I'm looking at it, I'm looking at page sixty here. If you develop a team in terms of what you wanna do with this thousand money, I could pick five of. You know, if you're looking at only a thousand on page sixty, there's five things right here that you. Can do. If you're gonna do it in a random kind of way, where you're just trying to pick up the things that. You could do easily. It's not that what you're gonna do is the how you're gonna do it. That takes up time when you're going on a grant proposal. Right? It's, it's the breaking it down into, into how you're going to. Implement the things that you say that you're going to do. So the bottom line here, updating infrastructure planning to align with official community plans. Rural targets and housing needs assessment. You know, if you do that with partnering with nonprofit housing providers to preserve and increase stock of affordable housing. You know, that's, that's a theme. If you, if you have a theme, um, and you have five of those points that all work towards one main goal, then you're more apt to make your goal. The question is, can you do it in four to five days? And I appreciate the fact that's, you know, like I said, I think the whole grant proposal was designed in such a way to make it almost possible for you to be able to do it, which, which is. You know, but.
What they get, I think five realistic things.
Well, I'm just looking at the affordable housing fees cuz that's so other, right?
Well, well, I think we all want development, but I think we all want more development as well, so. I mean, we talked, we talked about two things, right? Encouraging alternative. There's a bunch of addition of two. You know, we need to know, we have five things at this time.
Do the chair, the CEO, or is it to Wendy? What does it mean saying, uh, we wish to invest? Uh, the resources into our external budget? Do we have any I can give? Or we're looking at dollar signs? What do you think it's gonna cost us? You must stop.
I, 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 I go. Right?
We only have forty five.
It was made to sell on the. The agent for.
No.
For, 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 for tonight.
I can imagine that, yes. So just, but you have no idea dollars.
Did we give you a dollar for that?
Ten fifteen thousand. And then I'm trying to put a number.
No, no, I.
I probably could get, gonna answer. Jack, we, yeah, but I, I probably could get, you know. If we can bring it forward next, next week.
Next week's meeting?
Seven days. And maybe you can drag stuff, we'll start to do some more.
Well, so it hasn't decided that. So, so they haven't given a day of things conscious.
I think they have to, haven't they?
I, I hopefully didn't date very young on Saturday, but they had, it was going to, or they had.
Yeah. That's what I thought.
Like a sixty. So just one question to C O and, and to C. So procurement of, of someone to write the plan or to implement. Plan, how, what's the process that we would have to go through? Is that a R F P? Is that? A single source? Like, what, what are we looking at then to wire consulting to?
Well, prepare that for us.
So policy that we have for.
Policy will be depending on, if we're talking to, uh, I mean. I mean, I, I, I'm twenty, we, we, we would be required.
Under twenty, you're required.
Correct. Okay. Between, between twenty and fifty now. So I'm, I'm, I'm. I'm hopeful to the point where I. It's not a question.
Sure. Uh, so one more question was made, I'll be, so if we. If we did this and we secured one of them because we'd get twenty thousand dollars. So. That's where this works. You don't. Because. Right?
Or we could be eligible if we only got one.
Tell me, you're not putting any incentives.
Never mind. So we have to increase by ten. So our ideal average.
Thirteen?
Fourteen?
Basically, it was on the five year.
Yes, that's only going to stats and uh, twenty twenty one. And then we have to have. Yeah, it, it averages roughly.
So we need four more. We didn't need four more houses on average over how long a period?
Four years.
Over three years. We have to build twelve more houses over those three years than what. All five.
Yeah.
Something, you know, we're gonna see that. I didn't see the house where it's, it's a small, I couldn't see it. It's not as eventually secondary, it's as well.
And there's also. There's remedies to these movies, allowing, promoting, allowing more houses types. Oh, create a process to dispose of city home land assets for the development of affordable housing as a, right? Not requiring some.
Would that allow us to partner? So if we did something like that and partnered with Habitat for Human, so let's say we found, we found an acre like chemical distance, right? They had, they had an acre lot that they were gonna build a single family home. They, they went through a process like this where they decided to build fifteen. Uh, eight or nine hundred square foot pieces all together on that same one acre lot. So they made, they made one building. They did fifteen single. Single, single residences there with Habitat. Maybe something like that. If we have municipal property and we could partner with that, allow us to partner. Is there any restriction where we could?
Oh, that's right.
You saw or not.
Nonprofit housing providers. Was there access?
Some of it's private.
Promoting, allowing more houses types. Is there a problem with the population? They don't have that before.
And is some of it profit? Cuz I mean, no, cabin certainly isn't not for profit, so. It can be for profit as well.
Well, I think you're actually within one of these items. I bet you're from these items that are achieved by.
There is.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, oh. So I'm, I think then for me, a hundred percent for. A fine way to do this. And I would propose an upset, you know, of twenty thousand and I would hope that staff could find a way. To come back with a few, you know, a few areas where we can find, find money to, to do that. You know, we can get procurement started by C O W if we're gonna do the Mexican, if we're going to do that or, or as a month. Oh, no, wait, we got five. It's August eighteenth, you said, right? So we could actually see that here. But would it need approval and council? So we need it by the end of this month, right? This is the one. Kind of a special. Yeah, before the eighteenth. Yeah, before I know one of them. Hundred percent, hundred percent. Well, one for the twenty. And I think we could easily get twelve more. So it'd be, well, listening to what I heard today, I thought we had a presentation from Habitat today. A United Councils and they talk about looking for municipal partners. They want to build, they have. Projects ready to build. They're just looking for municipal partners like us that got land and surplus. Um, or even private investors that are willing to donate land. So perhaps we should, so that they can get buildings built. So, um, they're, they're ready, they're going to do it so that it actually remains affordable. Because right now, building a single family home isn't worth for Habitat anymore. If, 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 with the income level that we have in our area to build a traditional single family home. Most of the people can't qualify for Habitat anymore because they're five and six hundred thousand dollars a piece. So they're having a little bit smaller, it's like, they did in Kampal. And it actually sells a lot of our, everyone that's much smaller. So makes a ton of sense for us to start with them and then we'll achieve the goals of this. I think it's.
Well, to the chair, I'm looking at this, you know, rather than look at it and say, hey, is there something here? Then we can. Fit our needs into, I'm looking at it and saying, is there something here that fits every needs this council wants? You know, we've been talking about this, we're, we've been talking about tiny events. You know, we talked about making a tiny house community in four years. We'll get to talk about, you know, the twelve houses. So it's.
Yes, you know, you follow up, Mr. Marko. You also might wanna look at that. Revising whatever you need to revise, which plan is going to buy out or whatever. You know, I, I, I think it's time that they start allowing modular homes and, and pre-fab homes. And some of those homes look just as. Brave as a stick though, right? You know? They're not the old twelve foot by forty foot predator that they had in the nineteen sixties, you know? They're glamorous homes. And you know, it's, you can't put a manufacturing home in the township. Yeah, but I'm talking about, I, I'm talking about. So they're like that a lot.
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah. Uh, okay, I mean, I think we had a good discussion. I think we gave enough direction there, Mr. Hill, the C B C. That we're hoping for by next week's, uh, uh, I guess that's the, I think, the person said, in, in the next week. Uh, do you, uh, you think we have something to add to this week? Well, next week, help us all.
I'm hoping to get in on the move and come in next week if we can. I know it's a short swing for you guys.
Really short. And this was a discussion, I got that. The recommendation that you could approve there. Then we can pass it to council. That's thanks so much.
The challenge, the challenge with the window is. Really. Yeah, from, from, from the beginning, which, right? It used to be asked about, you know, so next year.
Right. But what you, the only thing you need is muscle direction, right? The rest is the work for you guys. But we need to do our part before you can do your part.
From, from, from a process perspective. It would be hard for me to go and uh, see. Couldn't have done much to.
So we do, uh, to the third, I think, the C O, do we need to have a council meeting to approve the extra twenty thousand? We need a special committee meeting for next week as well.
I think, I, I think in the circumstances, like this. We, uh, we give a general consensus on sort of an upset movement and. Uh, you should have been about better start working on it.
Twenty day. Will we get it done for twenty day?
I would certainly hope so.
The plan that comes back that, that we will, like, it will happen, it will be. Something that we need another consultant to read the plan. It will be something that we'll be able to. Something that we need another consultant to read the plan, it will be something that we'll be able to actually break from it.
Um, if. Yes, it will be designed. Understanding that in order to implement that action plan, this likely going to be additional costs. In 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 North Street.
So. Almost. Except for the, but the deputy mayor, uh, so all of their. Okay, there was. When you can see ones ones really about this. Okay, great, China, you know, that's, okay, now. We're close on that one, that's a winner of the six A, uh, the six discussion of the year. Deputy Mayor asked to bring this back, did you know this, any words, since we're deputy mayor?
Uh, no, I guess, I think there is, I'll move it. Also, I'm the. The, what I have here. Uh, I think. Wendy and yesterday, yeah, for for putting their input on it. And I think it's a good start to. Put a hold on anything until we get her. Until we get our. Fisher plan in order of reducing age. And so, I moved. This morning.
Any discussion now? Moving.
Um. I don't want to react to that, that's probably for sure. But I don't know. I was at the the meeting on.
So was I.
Twenty six of June.
Yeah. That was basically.
The deputy mayor was there too. You know, the kind of the girls have such small little rooms for. To invite anybody in. We went in the little room, there were about fifty people there, it was, it was overcrowded, fifty people. Might be a little bit more, you know, the majority of people there were people that were concerned about losing their own products. There were a few people there who farm up there. Of course, on Peterland agricultural resource, and it's gonna stay agricultural resource anyway. And then there was one farmer who, from Andrewsburg, who farms about, I would say, about a thousand to fifty hundred acres. And he spoke on behalf of the little land also, you know, big difference between rural and coastal. So I just got a feeling from from the planners, and there were two of them there. There was the. Uh, one was giving a presentation, and then there he. Think your planet was also better. I just got. Bad vibes from the whole meeting, you know. But.
Yeah, I really haven't my day done.
Yeah, like this was just.
And. I believe that.
Something that they just tend to do, like.
They go to.
No. And, you know, I put the questions to them, every time I put a question to them, you can see them pensing right now, but. No, I just didn't think it, whatever, I just didn't think it went through.
But it is a start, so.
So, so. So I I certainly support emotion, I think, but putting it in front of the. The other ten or the other nine leaders in our councils. Um, and I'm ultimately asking them to support the same thing and bringing. The power of that to the county council, to put it to a halt is is fantastic, I think, well done, it's there, well done on your part to propose it, well, well done to, I don't know that it will do anything, but it's, I don't think. I think that it shows that we do that, my concern, and and you know, I read through the OFA letter that we discussed earlier. With with the proposed EPS, going line seven. I just, I do struggle a little bit with with exactly what the OFA says in. Um, you know, the class one to three soils plus specialty properties, you know, if they use a primary agricultural land should be classified. As class one four, so it's right. Um, plus specialty crop lands, and where class one four are not presently in a county or region, the best agricultural lands in that county or region should be recognized. And protected for their agricultural uses, so. You know, I there are a few comments in in there that I actually struggle. That I struggle with. There was another one in regard to. Um, law, like not supporting law to. Law creation. Um. On agricultural lands as well, so I I struggled with a few of those OFA. You know, the letter that the OFA has put forward certainly is counter to what. What we said, but I I also understand where they're coming from, and they are, you know, they are a good proportion of of that area as well, so. What we're proposing certainly conflicts with what they're what they're suggesting in that one, and and you know.
It's been a long time now, but the class one service, the chairman, the class one, the class two lands were protected, and it's almost at the one, you know. But one, two, and three lands are pretty much protected now, but now they're wanting to go to four and five and six, you know? They're just, this, the. I'll give you an example, and it's it's my property, so I. I know pretty much progress on my end, so just take my property. Uh. Hundred fifteen acres, and. When we go and you take a look at. Uh, the nineteen forty nine soil map of Brentwood County. Uh, seventy five percent of my soil. I've cut two lots, but I would take my, I guess, you have a whole lot fourteen, but let's take that, we won't take the half. Like ninety five percent. Is this, is this soil, which is in a classification of four and under. So, but when we look at the county's Canada land inventory map, you know, of every municipality. My property doesn't even, and it, it has one, two, three, and four lands on plot on the map. My property doesn't even show all of them four, so obviously I have five to seven, so it ends in seven. But my property, the whole way, the whole property that I have is falling into the segment of, we do, as going to agriculture. And it's because I cut the property. It it's two things, it's because of the impact information that's that's putting you within your system. So if you are getting the farm tax rebate on a property, you're classified as an active farmer. And I said to the lady the other night, when she was doing her her spiel, I said, she she mentioned after firm, and I said, well, what's the meaning of active firm? She, why you tell me? And I said, well, to me, it's got many meanings, it means, it's a not, not a farmer is. It could be somebody who has six cows and a hundred fifteen acres. And it can be somebody who's done and who has to meet the 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 threshold, the seven thousand dollars income off of a property. Per year that did the burn tax. Uh, rebate, not rebate, the the rate. And there's a big difference then of the active firm and the subsidiary firms, about two hundred fifty thousand, a hundred, maybe a hundred thousand, they check every. Big difference. But we're all, but we're all being hit because we're active farmers, and we're all getting the same point. Because it's only one point, it's not a graduated scale. Which to me is shiver. Uh, I, I. I don't know what the presentation you have made at the town council, but I'm sure there are many county councils that didn't quite understand. The process, because even myself, and I didn't write any of this, yeah, it's very complicated. So anyway, so because my, because my, well, if your land touches the land of a active farm, you're automatically drawn in agricultural land. And mine is five to seven, it shouldn't, it's it's not even one and three, you know? And that's pretty much all that I'm.
Well, hopefully this will scare things off.
Well, I think that. It would be nice if it would support this resolution, and also, you know, I'm sure that there are some, the other mayor is gonna be excited as well, too.
Yeah.
Because this is, this, if I understand, and I asked that one, when does the town's official plan, when does it do again? In. Two thousand and six, and I said, well, what's the big push to get this accepted in first of September, and then it was, it was December, and now it's November. Like, why do you want to get this passed right away and get implemented right right away, why don't you just hold the plan, and implement it all once in two thousand and twenty six? We saw it, not stop like that, so, and what it does, and what it does. It it allows the people who are in rural, right now, that are going to go to agriculture, it it gives them two years to get their everything in order, you know, what they want to do with the problems. If you want to put a a barrage on an electric electrical business or whatever, you know, this is two years, finally.
Um, okay, any other comments? Uh, no, I I I really have one question, and I'm trying my best not to ask any questions, but. So, this 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 resolution that we sent, we'd also be sending copies of this to all the, all the twelve municipalities within the.
Forward to.
Okay, the, that's all, and so. Okay, so on that. This was a. Second, and so move by. And second, by their nation, um, do I need to read them? Okay. Perfect, so any other special? All in favor? Can we go back to that again, Chair, can we, or does it get circulated, and I prefer that it was. My thing, but it's maybe more. Yep. So, for the vote, the first one, it's no different for me, I just. One way, one individually, so answer my doubt, yay. Well.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. And myself is a yay as well. Okay, it is important, actually. Okay, that's good. So, that's getting you done with that, so then moving on to six B, work with economic development, none is what we have here. Uh, and then C plan recreation, also none for recreation. Uh, okay, so moving on to the number seven, it's that, sorry, we're seven, is the increase that notices a motion, if anybody have, but deputy mayor.
Uh, thank you, I have an inquiry, I just like you say, uh. Our new accessible playground is being used by. A wealthy children on July one, down in. I like to send a letter off to. John Tager for your donation on that, I know it's gonna be a grand opening. And Pastor Mr. Pat say off for starting that, I I should appreciate it. And on that other token, I like to thank all my staff and members, any of the kind words, prayers for. That you sent me for losing my dad, it shows a lot to myself, my thanks, thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Okay. Right, you got a question, very. Questions, uh. Perfect, and we have an open session this evening, that's great. Uh, and then, so we can ask with German, I need a mover. Unnegotiable adjournment. Stay what, let's stand by on the ground. All right, I'll be, yes, that's it. First.
Not impressed, well, just well done. I love them.